Recording in progress.
I'd like to bring this meeting to order. Can we please stand for the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and truly public for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Marian Rosa, Jonathan Ramsey.
Here.
Ken Demiers.
Here.
Robert De Sina.
Here.
Jeffrey Damaris.
Here.
Anthony Devona.
Here.
Louis Raza. Robert Retalik.
Here.
Rachel Ryan.
Here.
Thank you. Public comment? Please state your name and address. Anyone like to speak to the council? There's a little face there. You press that. You're... One more time. The red light on the microphone.
Okay, there we go. 237 Ball Farm Road, Oakville. I just want to let you know Karen, who was at the meeting last time, was not able to be here. The only concern that she had was that the town attorney back in 2015, when you guys mentioned it, that you guys had heard about this before, she said nobody ever approached her about that at all. We got no legal documentation from the town saying that we were legally responsible. And again, in my deed, it mentions nothing about a pipe. I have a couple of questions that I'm concerned about. In your subcommittee meeting, that was the last one, they talked about retention ponds, that they had some that were big, some that were small, and some that you didn't even know that were yours, and that they were not maintained. What effect does that have on us downhill? All right? That's one. The drains that are supposed to take care of the runoff in the town, where are they? Where are they located? How many do we have? How many are in our area? That was another one. In 2015, when we were in the house, that was the first time that it flooded the backyard so bad that it tipped over a freezer that was in my basement, cracked the floor. We had flood insurance at the time, they told us. In order to have the mortgage in 2011, that we had to have flood insurance. They said we were in a flood zone. So we had the flood insurance. We tried to put a claim into FEMA. They said that it wasn't because of hydrostatic pressure, so they wouldn't fix it, the basement floor. As far as what was outside, we had no idea what's outside. Roy Kavanoff came and Paul from Public Works or Engineering, whoever he is, he came out there and in the area where it's open in the back there on two houses behind me where the big pipe is, they took out a stump that was like this big. It took two men from Public Works to take it and they walked it off the property. I don't know what they did with it. They lined up the whole back of the house with sandbags and they told... Then when they came out to talk to us, all they said to us is that the pipe was on private property and that we were responsible. It's never mentioned in my deed about a pipe and that I was responsible. Wetlands, on your last... The last meeting that they had with wetlands, they're worried about liability. If this is... If it is from wetlands, if it's protected by wetlands, they also told us that too on 2015, that because it was wetlands, we could not touch the... Within 100 foot of the brook on both sides. That we would need a permit. So I have no money to fix something like that. I mean, I don't even know where it is. I mean, I do now because that's where people say it is, but I've seen no proof legally where it is. And then the town attorney in his report, I never met him. I never spoke to him. He's never spoke to me or Mark or anything in our house. I just don't understand why I'm the bullseye. I'm the bullseye. My house. Since moving into the house in 2011, I've had to have surgeries where organs have had to be removed from me. I have now had to go on oxygen because the... Probably because of the mold that's in my basement, that I can't... Even if I did try to clean it up after every single storm, I can't keep up with it. I just don't know what else to do. And then at your last meeting, we spoke with Paul outside the meeting and he told us not to fix the driveway yet. And in the meantime, the driveway is continually eroding more and more every time it rains. So... That's all I have to say, I guess. I don't know what else to do. I don't know. But it shouldn't be just on a homeowner. You talk about safety, what about my safety? I can't even walk in my backyard because I don't know if I'm going to fall through like the previous owner next to Karen's house where she fell through Ms. Finn and she had to pay to have that big pipe, the big piece, put in. She fell through. She was an old lady. She's still alive, too, you guys. So I just don't know what... We don't know what to do. So I'd be interested to know about the funds, if funds are coming, and what the plan might be because we need help here. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Can I take this off while I'm here? Richard Wick, Northfield Road. Earlier today, I sent a... Or forwarded a petition to the council and I realize it's not realistic to expect that you've had a chance to study it, but I'm here to fill in some information about why I'm doing it rather than why some of the people who initiated the petition are doing it. But before I get into that, I'd just like to read something from one of our ordinances. "It is recognized that people have a right to and should be insured an environment free from excessive sound, vibration, and other activities that may jeopardize their health, safety, or welfare, or degrade the quality of life. This article is enacted to protect, preserve, and promote the health, safety, welfare, and quality of life for the residents of the town." Sounds pretty good, doesn't it? So why am I here? During the summer, a group of residents were impacted by noise and they got together and developed a petition and got almost 40 signatures on it electronically and quite a few comments. One of the conditions was that the people signing it, the identity of the people signing it would be protected. And that desire was respected. I'm here tonight because the group wanted to present it to the council formally. And I'm here because none of the people involved were willing to do it. They were afraid. They had been intimidated. During the summer, they had been threatened as a result of comments made on anti-social media. And they were afraid. Now, I'm here to tell you this little story because I think it's a more serious issue than what's in the petition. I think it's more serious because it means that there has been an atmosphere that is destructive, that has been allowed to pervade the environment in this town. Isn't that a shame? Isn't that a shame? What are we going to do about it? There used to be a sign, there might still be, outside called Be Kind. Is that going to start anytime soon? Thank you for listening.
Al Mickle, 95 Woodvine Avenue. It's good to see everybody wearing masks. I've got a few things to talk about tonight. Some of them are fairly easy, some of them are more detailed. But to start off with, I have talked about public participation. Maybe in the next town council meeting, we'll have public participation, hopefully. First question is, what's the status of the Munson House? It's been around for a while. Somebody said they were going to clean it out, maybe we're going to sell it. We don't know what we're going to do. I haven't heard a word about the Munson House since I was left out of the meeting. I'm curious. Maybe I'll have to ask the town manager or the school board if they've cleaned it out. Now, on the good news, or at least my positive news anyway, I attended the police commission meeting where Sergeant DeAndrea presented the license plates reader. It was an excellent presentation. He covered all the people that he talked to, narrowed the choices down to what he figured the best and cheapest one was, and I'm here to fully support it. I would suggest a few more ideas to these license plates readers. Once the bad guys know where they are, they'll just drive around them. So I would suggest that they are mobile. You can move them from one pole to the next pole to the next. Or failing that, you get fake ones and hang them up and maybe the bad guys won't know where the real ones are. I think they're an excellent way to determine the bad guys that are coming into town. So I would easily suggest spending the money to do this. Now, one of the other things on the menu which confuses me all the time, but I think it's important, is the bonding. We're rebonding, rebonding issues, and I don't understand any of that. But I understand we're trying to get in place, ready for the types of capital projects we have coming up, which I think are going to be very important. For example, what we're going to talk about tonight is the senior center, community center. Hopefully, we're going to see what the police... The information that the architect developed for the police commission. I think it's going to be available very, very soon. Right? I thought so. So bonding is going to be an important issue coming in the future. We have a, I think it's a 70 million bond limit, and I'm not sure how much this stuff is going to cost, but we have to pay particular attention to that because I don't think interest rates are going to go down. And what we do now is probably going to be more important than what we do two or three years from now because rebonding will not be an issue because there are going to be no interest rates lower than what we get. Now, in the last town council meeting, the town manager talked about the public safety audit and he allocated $9,200 for a presentation by Public Works. And I just happened to remember that we already spent $23,600 on the blinking signs. He also mentioned, and I didn't understand about the... He mentioned the Main Street Committee. I'd never heard of them. I don't know who they are. I don't know who is on them. I don't know who initiated the Main Street Committee. I'll have to talk to the town manager to figure out who those people are. Now, why do we need a program for public support? This is safety on Main Street. It's important. Do we need this to go to referendum? Are we going to spend more money on the Main Street Audit? So I want to know what effect, what result is going to come from a public support presentation? Is it going to affect a referendum? Thank you. Now, this is interesting because political signs are popping up all over the place. It's amazing how it happens every now and again. Now, when my team wins, I want to know when we have to take our signs down. Is there a timeframe? Is there an ordinance? Is there a planning and zoning rule when political signs must be taken down? I'm not sure who I asked to find out if there is a rule like that. I don't want to tread on anybody's First Amendment rights, but I think I would like to leave my sign up forever. But maybe that's not allowed. Next one is, where's the police station report from Humes? Well, I know where it is now. Now, the real big question here is the senior community center. That presentation was amazing. It was labeled as a needs assessment. I read it like a wants assessment. I don't know if we need all this stuff in there, but as long as we're talking about needs, I think I'd like to put my needs in there. I would certainly like to see a winter outdoor skating rink on the grounds. And I like to use this word because I had to look it up once. I certainly think a natatorium would be a great thing in the new civic center. So I'd like to add those to one of the wants, not needs, but wants. I'm not quitting. Now, one of the things they were tasked with, the architect was tasked with, is to come up with the questions on the line of sight, site egress, and traffic control. The only thing I read in there was there's going to be a road from Veterans Park to the property. Now, I'm assuming it's the property on Buckingham and Nova Scotia Road because it doesn't mention that in here. So I don't know what the needs assessment are for those issues. So... And the last thing, two meetings ago, I think it was in August, the council was going to have a meeting on the noise ordinance. And tonight was supposed to be the night that that ordinance subcommittee was supposed to come back with a report. I don't see it. So I'm not sure what happened to it. It's a pity that we couldn't get some noise ordinance in front of the town in a reasonable amount of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Actually, I forgot to mention one thing.
Go ahead.
Is that all right?
Last week, it was a nice sunny morning and between me and Joe's, ordinary Joe's, and Karen's water was coming down, but it wasn't raining. And it was a lot of water, not like the big rains when it comes, but we didn't... We had no idea where this water was coming from and it came down for more than an hour. So I don't know if anybody knows anything about that water. Maybe we could get an answer on where this water came from. The backyard didn't flood, but it was coming out where I guess it's broken and it flooded all of Joe's, you know, all over the deck and coming down into the road. So just last Monday, I believe it was. Thank you.
Kathryn Camer, 31 Cottage Place. I want to comment about the property that we bought up on Nova Scotia. We were asked to spend $300,000 for this piece of property and it was designated for the seniors to have a new senior center. That was on the ballot. That's what we voted for. Now, we're hearing about needing a new police station. Yes, we desperately do need a new police station. But what we're hearing is we're going to put it up on that piece of property. What I'm also hearing is I believe a study has already been done about that. When were the people of this town asked if we approve of that? We weren't... We didn't vote for that, for that piece of property. So it should be on a referendum as to whether or not, first of all, do we need a new police station? You know, there's questions to be asking the town and you certainly should be asking the people if we want to put a police department on that piece of property because that's not what we voted for. The other question I have about this is what's the priority here? We kind... We do need both, but what's the bigger priority? I'm sorry, I believe that I would love to see a new senior center, absolutely, but if there's a priority here, I think we have to go with the police department first. So I don't really know where the logic has been here, where the thought process has gone. But as a voter and someone who voted for something particular to a piece of property, I feel that I should be being asked if we're going to change what the plan was. And I think everybody, many people that I talked to, agree with that. Why did we vote for something specific and now it's being changed and we're not being given the opportunity to voice whether or not we want that change? And personally, I have said this before, you're blowing the opportunity of looking at that piece of property at Sealy in Oakville. It would make a fantastic place for a police department where the people come in through Waterbury and you'd have the police department sitting up on the hill. What I hear is they'll never put it in Oakville. And if that's anything, if anyone has that opinion, shame on you because we, the residents of Oakville, pay taxes and we have to look at this town hall, this beautiful new Watertown Town Hall. Not Water Oak, not Watertown, Oakville. Oakville could use something that pertains to this town. And it's a shame that no one's looking, had the foresight to recognize that Sealy property was becoming available and could have gotten it for the town. It's also, it's got the green already down there. I'm further hearing that people want to move Mozgrove Field out of Oakville and they want this whole downtown area to be retail or something. Again, shame on anybody who thinks that. That's been there for decades. So don't take it out of Oakville. And maybe you should consider that we pay taxes too and maybe we should have something that belongs to this town to be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council? Saying none, public comment be closed.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, October 4th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion changes? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Any abstentions? I have nothing for the chairperson's report. Town manager?
Good evening, Chairperson and members of the Watertown Town Council. Just to give you an update, we've met with Burlington Construction regarding the pending punch list items. Since our meeting, Burlington has begun to work on completing the punch lists. We are still working on identifying HVACs, issues, and resolutions. We've moved out the cooling... We've moved out of the cooling season, so we're not going to be able to get an answer on whether our cooling is working properly or not. So we're going to have to move that out until next year. Hopefully, when you all came in, you were able to see the columns lit in the front of the building. It looks beautiful. Thank you to our partner, Rec Director, for taking care of that for us. Steel Brook Greenways Engineering Design Project have, and we've, as I told you last report, we received all our proposals and the committee has met and we scheduled interviews for November 4th. Update on our small city housing rehab grant. We had 32 inquiries, 16 applicants that are in the process of being reviewed for eligibility and we have approximately $250,000 in funds to distribute amongst those applicants. On October 14th, 2021, at around 7:54 a.m., we had a two-alarm structure fire on Buckingham Street in Oakville. A passerby, a Waterbury fireman, stopped his vehicle and entered the home to assist anyone in need. This fireman risked his own life and sustained injury in his attempt to save a stranger. 8 a.m. is a challenging time for response for volunteers that are usually on their way to work. We had 25 volunteer firemen respond to this fire. I was on scene and observed many staff members managing the fire scene, including firefighters, police, and actually highway personnel. In addition, highway personnel took it upon themselves to assist with traffic management and signage. I want to say thank you to the Waterbury firemen, our Watertown Fire, police, including communications and highway staff for managing that scene and the investigation as it's moving forward. I had a roundtable discussion with union presidents this past week. We had great discussions over many topics and have decided to meet quarterly to keep communications open and continue to improve management, union relations, and Watertown services. Our ARPA committee had met on October 13th. We've hosted a flu clinic within the town hall on the 13th as well and will continue to advise as we move through our meetings with ARPA. Training has been scheduled, as I said last time, with Pullman and Comey. Just a reminder, August 26th at 6:30. If you're interested, please notify my office so we can put you on the list.
What was the date on that?
October 26th at 6:30 p.m. And we'll be going over Robert's Rules and FOIA integration. Just another reminder for CCM convention, November 30th and December 1st. I received an update from Torrenton Area Health today regarding COVID cases in Watertown. We're basically hovering around the 4% level for COVID cases. We're kind of in the middle of Northwest corner. I do have good news that our 65 and older group has a 96.3 vaccination rate for Watertown. So that's great for our older community members. Negotiations, white collar, still waiting. We have a tentative agreement. I'm still waiting for a response from the union. Communication talks are still ongoing and I know that nobody believed me, but I did hire a public works director, Lou Spina, and I did bring him with me to prove that I did hire him. Like to welcome Lou. He started first thing this morning with a little tour of Truman Terrace and he got a little meet and greet over there. He jumped right in. And just one quick follow-up. I would like to note that the Watertown Food Bank received a $7,500 check from the Archbishop's annual appeal. So Lisa, thank you for doing that and thank you to the Archbishop's for donating that money to the town of Watertown. And I think that's it for me tonight.
Thank you. Next, under new business, we have a presentation related to the Watertown Community Center Space Needs Assessment.
Good evening and thank you, Mr. Chair and honorable council members, town manager. My name is Brian Humes. I'm representing Jekunsky-Humes Architects out of Berlin, Connecticut. And for tonight, we'd like to review our work that has been done to develop a space needs assessment for a proposed Watertown Community Center. I would like to thank the staff that has helped put this together, primarily to my left, Lisa Carew, the Director of Watertown Human and Social and Leisure Services. I've been working with Lisa primarily since January of this year to try to develop what is going to be considered your facility for a community center. Even the name of the facility has been discussed. Is it a senior center? Is it a community center? I think the description that you see that we're presenting tonight and looking to you to get a vote of approval is a community center. A little context about our work in Watertown and what led us to develop a space needs assessment for a community center for your community was the work that we started doing in October of 2019 to develop a similar needs assessment for the Watertown Police Department. Our architectural firm, my architectural firm's... Our architectural firm, my architectural firm's been in business for 25 years. We develop municipal space needs assessments and in 2019, we presented to the town a four-part process to determine the needs of a police facility. That four-part process was to develop a space needs assessment, to do a site evaluation, to get a schematic design completed and to get a professional cost estimate on the final solution. Since 2019, we have only completed two of the four phases of that approach. So as far as the police department in 2019, we presented a space needs assessment dated February 2020. That was part one. This was brought to the council at that time and discussed and we had approval then to go to the next phase for the police department, and that's a site assessment. And the site assessment was dated March of 2020. When we were doing our site assessment, we were given two sites to review. The sites were given to us through the town and the two sites was 195 French Street and the other site was Zero Nova Scotia Hill Road. The 195 French Street is their current location for the police department. The Zero Nova Scotia Hill Road was a vacant parcel and everybody, I think, is referring to that as a Buckingham Street site. When we completed our site assessment, we did find issues and complications with their current site at 195 French Street. But we did assess the Buckingham Street site as being a potential site for a police facility. And that was our report. We didn't get any approval to go any further than that. There has been no schematic designs completed for that facility on that site and there's been no cost estimates developed for any of that for the police department. But since that March of 2020, we have been informed that the Buckingham Street site was also a site that had a potential for a senior center or a community center. So it was in November of 2020 that we were asked by the town to do a similar approach for a community center, a similar four-part approach. Again, space needs assessment has to be done first. Before we can do any site assessment, we really need to know what it is we're designing to. What are the requirements and what are the needs? Once that's determined, and what we're presenting tonight is, is something that's been endorsed through Lisa and her committee. It's been reviewed by the town manager. But we're looking to get a consensus that what's described in the needs assessment can advance toward a site assessment. We're assuming that the Buckingham Street site would be that site that we would assess. And at that time, we can assess that site for a building or multiple buildings, whether it's just a community center or it's a community center and a police facility. Cause that site does have over 17 acres of land in its total and it does abut the Veterans Park. But until we can get to any site assessment, what's really important to know is what it is that's being planned, what it is that we're designing to. And since January, I have been meeting with, with town staff to try to determine what it is those needs are. And very early in the process, I've learned a couple things. Lisa Carew wears many hats. She's been here for a long time. She has a wealth of knowledge about this town. Her responsibilities are many, but her, her desire to, to put together a document that really describes what she and her commission feels would be the right facility for the town going forward was something that I felt she had a passion for. It was mentioned many times that this cannot just be a wants list. This really needs to be a needs list. Because what I was asking of the town was what do you feel you need, not how many square feet do you think you need? My questions to Lisa and her staff were not how many square feet do you need in an office, but do you need an office at all? And if you need an office, what are the requirements of that office or what are the requirements of that space? That was the conversation that we had. And once those requirements were determined for each space, then it was my responsibility to put an accurate square footage number on that space. So it's not the town that's saying you need X number of square feet. It's the town is saying, we need these functions. And if you have these functions and you want them to be done efficiently and, and have them function for their intended use, they should have a certain size. With that information, we now have a packet that we could go and apply to a site. We can then have a packet that we can identify its size on that site and we can determine access, parking requirements for that facility. So tonight I've passed out dated June 2021 and that you've had it in your packet. I did bring some other copies tonight if you, if you need a copy. And it is the space needs assessment for Watertown Community Center. If you have it in front of you, I always like to jump to the conclusion and then work backwards. So I'm starting on page 13. On page 13 is my summary sheet. It describes all of the spaces and all the categories of spaces within a community center. It has areas for public, for administrative offices, for volunteers, a break room, a central meeting room, a kitchen, social services food bank, activity meeting rooms, arts and crafts activity rooms, arts and crafts supply storage rooms, a teen room, a game room, a billiards room, a computer room and learning center, a living room, reading room or library, counseling and exam rooms, medical supply storage, a gymnasium, general storage, an area for concession and vending, an exercise cardio room, aerobics classroom, locker rooms, toilets and custodial services, vertical circulation and then mechanical space. That's a general description of all of the spaces that we have identified with a total net square footage of 25,735 square feet. When I refer to net square footage, it's the area of, within the walls of the room. This council chambers, if I'm measuring from wall to wall, wall to wall, gives me the net square footage. That's how much usable space you have within the, the, the space. But if I'm to design a building, I need to design to outside to outside walls and that includes other things within this. It's not described such as circulation space, wall thicknesses, outside wall thicknesses. And that's when you go from a net square footage to a gross square footage. And for planning purposes, there are planning documents that say for a large space like a gym, you want to increase that square, square footage by 1.1. But for the rest of the facility, your net to gross factor goes to a multiplier of 1.35. Again, we haven't put pencil to paper. We're trying to determine what size this facility represents. When you take the 25,735 net square footage and calculate that for an overall gross square footage of a building, it's estimated that the overall out-to-out building dimensions would give you 32,585 square feet. Now that's for the first time describing for you how big the facility needs to be. But that number has gone through a lot of variations since January. From January to June, that number was higher and sometimes it was lower. But we're trying to again, determine what it is that you need. And in doing that, I think Lisa and, and the rest of the staff really lived with this document for a number of months, trying to envision what activities would draw people to the facility, what activities, if we're going to build it, need to be included. What you see on page 13 is that summary. But if now knowing the summary, if I can go back to page three, it breaks that summary down into its individual parts. The public space, as you saw on the summary sheet, was 750 square feet. But now starting on page three, you see that public space of 750 square feet is broken into three individual spaces, a vestibule, a public lobby and a thrift shop or marketing store. The vestibule at 100 square feet, the lobby at 400 square feet and a thrift shop at 250 square feet make up that 750 total category. This is where we ask the questions, what do you need to do within the space? How is the space going to function for you? If people are going to be coming to this facility, what are they expecting to see for services? It's understood that this facility would operate for the director, social services offices, senior center coordinator and all of the staff. But if we're growing the facility, we're also having to anticipate potential for staff It's not just taking what you have now, moving it in, to another location. It's trying to plan for the future. And this is where this gets a little bit forward-thinking, but we're also trying to do it with a definite eye toward making this appropriate for your community. I've asked Lisa many times, do you feel that this is adequate for your community? And her response is yes. But she doesn't have the authority to now say, go to a site assessment. I've explained it to the town manager and again, he's seen it, he's understood it, but he doesn't feel he has the authority to say, yes, go to a site assessment with this. That's why we're here tonight, to try to explain this a little bit further on the methodology and what, what's been put together because this is really your community's document. I've helped you get there and with what you're seeing tonight, but this document is going to reflect what the community ultimately will see in a final product. And if it doesn't accurately reflect that, then we should not be moving on to a site assessment. We need to get this document done first and correctly because the site assessment and the schematic designs that follow are all built off of this document. And especially if we're looking to place two buildings on that site and, and if things change in the future with the site assess, with the space needs assessment, that definitely affects your site placement and your site assessment. The reason we recommended this in the four-step process, that these four steps make sense sequentially. But to get to the end and spend the money on, on your four steps, only to find out we've, that we've achieved not the right solution means you have to go backwards and that will potentially cost you more money and that we don't really want to have additional money spent moving forward. So I could go through this in, in more detail. I don't know if that's something you need me to do or you want me to do, but I've explained the methodology. I've explained how we received input. I think some of the things that, that may be of interest to you are, are why are things maybe not in this document? I mean, we had a lot of conversations about a pool and, and it's not in this document. But I think it, it's also because it's been thought of at this level, on a committee level, on a staff level, is feeling that this is, this is the facility that's described that, that wants to get managed and wants to get staffed and ultimately wants to get constructed. The, uh, the other part of this is not just the building, but it is the site. The site also has some requirements that start on page 14, but it talks about building orientation. It talks about parking requirements for this facility of about a 200 park, 200 car parking space, staff parking, fleet vehicle parking. Talks about some other things that, that have to be done to support the facility such as dumpster enclosures, snow storage, plant materials. It talks about an emergency generator because it was discussed that if this building was built, it would be under emergency power and also could be utilized as a emergency management shelter if the town needs that service. So that's another thing that was incorporated into this. It could be a multi-use facility if, if there was a natural disaster. This building would have emergency power. It would have areas for cots. It would have showers and lockers and would have showers within the locker rooms because to utilize this as a shelter, you do, you do need showers. It's one of the requirements. You do need emergency power. Also a patio picnic area, outdoor sports activities. Pickleball's been very popular. So outdoor pickleball courts, just two, a splash pad or a water feature and then a garden area so the community can, can develop garden space. The Buckingham Street site also, as you know, abuts the Veterans Park. It has been talked about that this Buckingham Street entrance could be the entrance to the park as it leads up to a community center and then beyond into the park area. So instead of taking the, uh, the entrance that you currently have, relocate that entrance and potentially make that an entrance into the, into the park area itself. So that's a consideration. The space needs assessment for the police department is still valid. The site assessment is still valid. We are just getting, waiting for further direction from the town on how you might want us to proceed on the schematic design for that also, as you also are looking to get some input on the schematic and the site assessment for the community center. We have two community centers that we're working on currently within our office. And just a little note on community centers, senior centers, we're, we're finishing up a senior center addition renovation for the town of Dennis, Massachusetts. They're just having a grand opening tomorrow. We are working on a concept right now for Windsor Locks. And the Windsor Locks proposal is to put a senior center and police department on the same parcel. Kind of interesting that Windsor Locks is kind of following a similar pattern that I'm seeing in Watertown. We have also about 20 years ago, completed the Farmington Police Department and the Farmington Senior Center. If you're familiar with Farmington, they are also on the same parcel. And that's our project that was done about 20 years ago now. So we, we understand that police facilities and senior centers or community centers can cohabitate very well on, on a single parcel. There are models that we have not far from here, Farmington being one of them. But we're also seeing that these community centers are really centers for active living. The term senior center is kind of an older term. You have senior centers, but what we're finding in these senior centers or community centers are, are really patrons that are looking to keep and maintain an active lifestyle. And that's why we have aerobics in here. That's why we have a gym in here. That's why we have pickleball in here. We, we're finding that 55 and older crowd is, is not an inactive crowd. We're finding that they're, they're more and more wanting to maintain an active lifestyle. And that's what this community center, I think, addresses and promotes. It's really a center for, for active living. We have toured the facilities that, that We have toured the facilities that are under Lisa's authority currently. So we have toured those. We've seen how they function. We see the size that's needed. We are also taking notes on how some of those spaces are inadequate at the current time. And the square footage that you see represented in this space needs assessment, I think, corrects some of those current deficiencies in size, as well as implements new programs. So I'm here to answer questions. If you want me to go through this in really more detail, I'm happy to do that, but I really don't want to just take your time if you have it in front of you and you understand how it's been completed. Maybe I'm better served just answering questions.
Thank you very much. I don't think we have any intention on voting on this tonight, but if there are any additional questions for Brian or Lisa related to this space needs study, anyone have any questions at this time?
I just have one brief question. On, under the public section, they have the thrift shop and marketing store. What, just carries as to what would be sold, would it be local merchandise, you know, town-related merchandise? Is there something specific that's sold there? Is it going to be like a small convenience store type thing? I mean, I don't, I just kind of don't know what that would look like.
You want to answer that?
Sure. It would vary according to probably even seasons. Sometimes we have shirts and things that we have at the rec. department. The seniors make arts and crafts and do different things. If you, like Cheshire Senior Center and certain senior centers, they have almost like a display and you're able to buy things from the seniors. So it's not really a thrift store. I mean, or a tag sale kind of thing. But some communities do do a thrift store. They'll have like a swap shop. We used to have that before COVID. We had that down at our senior, current senior center. And they had a little swap area where they could just drop stuff off. But this was more intentional, it'd be more of a formal area and not just a little cubby.
Okay. And one other thing, you said that discussions had been made for a pool, assuming an indoor pool. What was sort of the pros and cons for that? I mean, I don't want to take too much time with it. Yeah, I figured cost would be the thing. Is it, is there also space concerns? How much additional space it could add to the size of the facility?
Right.
And when you're talking about a pool, there are different types and versions of pools, anywhere from competition pools to therapeutic pools. So wanting to know what the desired intent of that pool is, you just say pool. I know the town of Berlin right now is doing a community center proposal with three pools within its community center. So maybe it's, if you're getting into aquatics, maybe it's just not one pool fits all. I know the Berlin Pool has a full competition pool to be used by its high school swim team. It has a therapeutic pool, and then I think it has a whirlpool situation. So wanting to know that, it's really getting to that question and answer, what do you want to do in it? What do you want it used for? And then we can determine size. But I think when it got down to our conversations, it was really priorities. The areas for gym space seem to be a higher priority than the pool, and the pool would be adding just an incremental cost to this project that felt was not the current need, but maybe a future.
Were any cost projections done based on this information? Nothing that, I know it's probably nothing that's solid as a quote, but just an idea of what-
That's a good question.
-project costs would be.
Yeah, that's a good question, and it's something that really should be part of the conversation at this point. Because if you're approving a facility of 32,005, obviously to build that's going to come with a price tag. We don't have anything designed at this point, so all we can go off of is comparables. But if you're looking at comparables for community centers or senior centers in your region right now, this facility alone would be in the range of about $25 million. And that's hard costs, that's total costs. I'm not saying the construction would cost 25 million, but when you're adding construction of, construction plus soft cost plus contingencies, it's a potential referendum number for a total project.
Yeah, I would say so. With Watertown, definitely.
Don't quote me on that, but it is part of the conversation that you need to have.
Now, this is separate from costs for the police department. That would be a-
That is correct.
A wholly different cost. And based on what was written for the police department, is there any idea of an estimates for that based on the previous proposals that was made?
I think I, now you're going to put me on the spot. That facility was proposed at 25,330 square feet. A facility of that size, I would anticipate that that could be in the 15 to 20 million dollar range also.
Okay. So we're looking somewhere upwards of potentially $45 million for the whole, both?
Yeah, potentially. And that's why I say that it's important to know that. Because if you don't have the appetite, and it's not to say that you have to do both concurrently, you still have to determine what your priorities are as a town. But we would present a plan. And once that site plan is reviewed, then we can go to floor plans. And only then could we really get a hard cost estimate. And that's that fourth piece that I talked about. It's a professional cost estimate based on a specific solution. But we would again anticipate that the numbers would come back again in the range based off of construction pricing that we're seeing.
Mr. Chair, if I might ask you a question of something you may be aware of. Is there any special subcommittee that's set up or planning to be set up to address these particular concerns for both of these projects?
Not that I'm aware of at this point.
All right. I would suggest that maybe we consider that in a future meeting as to maybe setting something like that up, so that we can look at this in a more granular level before we come to the full committee.
And as Brian mentioned, he almost recommends, you know, sitting on this for a few months, going through and asking questions, both with Lisa, with town manager, and so on and so forth.
Okay, I agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other-
Mr. Chair? Lisa, I have a question about the offices. I'm assuming you and your staff would stay here and then this would, the offices, or you would move, or what?
The offices that are here in the basement now and the senior center would be merged into one building.
In this community center?
That's what's included in what you're seeing tonight. So everyone would be in one facility.
Okay. And then I had a question about the gym. Could that be a multipurpose room for volleyball and other things?
The gym? You're sitting in my gym. It was my gym.
That's right, that's right. It just says basketball court, so I just wanted to know.
Actually, right here was where the stage used to be. So it also has a platform area and stuff. But we lost a lot when we lost, I mean, it's a beautiful place, but you have here, but this was the gym at one time. So it's trying to get back. And going back to the swimming pool, just for a second, because it just needs to be said, the Watertown High School pool is in its 50th, next year will be like 50 years old, I think it is, 1970. So we use it. We use it all the time. The problem is getting into it during the day when the kids are in school because of security reasons. So at some point, it's not really being used during the day. It's not being used until 2:20 in the afternoon. So kind of envisioning, to be honest with you, is to almost have an outside entrance that could be possibly done down the road to have the public be able to use the pool without impacting the school and security of the school, because that is a big thing. But what was envisioned of at Veterans for this, for the needs assessment, was a splash pad. Huge. Thinking big. And I kept saying that to Brian. You don't need lifeguards. You can shut the water off. And this is a big trend. You know, there's no lifeguards needed and they're fun, they're interactive, and it's just kind of the trend right now. So we do have Crestbrook up the street that we have the outdoor pool. It's not Olympic size, but it's, you know, functional. It's old, it's built in 1963, so it's old. But with the high school pool, and a lot of people are using their own facilities. So that's why I was, I was trying to state, maybe you're going to change your mind, you want to put a swimming pool, but at that time, when we were discussing on this, I kept saying, okay, let's try to keep some of that cost down and use the splash pad, because that is what the trend seems to be right now, so.
And Rich, one of the questions you had about uses for the gymnasium, under the description of the gymnasium, it mentions floor inserts for recreational equipment. Is that for like volleyball?
Volleyball, everything, yeah.
So you can use it for other sports and purposes?
Multi-use. Pickleball, a lot of indoor uses for that space. We sized it on the standard of a high school basketball court. So that's the largest single court that you could have. But with that size gymnasium, you could do multiple courts within it.
We used to have ping pong. We have, we have the tables. We have all this stuff that we used to have, you know, when the school, when this was still the gymnasium, so.
It also lists a mesh divider screen between the practice courts. That's on 18A3. So that wire mesh would allow multiple courts to go and be utilized at the same time.
And one of those same lines mentions the main basketball court and then two practice courts. So this overall size is mentioned at the 8,500 square foot. I'm assuming that would be bigger than any gym we currently have in town?
It would be the size like the high school.
Well, is it a full-size basketball court plus two practices?
No, it's one full-size court. And then smaller half courts.
So for the little guys, we have the dropdown, what we use right now, we have to go in the schools, we have the portable things we can drop down on top of the existing hoops.
So those who go with, instead of mine.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd again like to thank staff for helping me put this together. I haven't said that enough, but it really is your document. And we're just waiting to hear back and whether it accurately describes it for the
Thank you.
I move to approve the resolution with respect to the authorizing of the issuance and sale of not exceeding $11 million, Town of Watertown General Obligation Refunding Bonds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there someone to speak on this? Just in summary, it's more or less refinancing bonds that we currently have?
Correct. So we have the 2012 and 2015 bonds. If we do the refinancing, it'll go into effect January 1st. We do have a potential of about a $900,000 savings in total, but interest rates are very low right now. We want to move quick on this before, because they are starting to creep up a little bit. But it would be 2012, 2015 bonds.
And the $900,000 savings, that's annual savings?
That's overall.
Overall, okay. And in the, I'm assuming we'll be getting lower interest rates?
Correct, yes.
Are we extending timeframe of bonds or just reducing interest?
Yep, just strictly refinancing for the interest, yes.
Are we increasing the outstanding obligation, 11 million?
No, no.
Okay, because I read on the, it said here that, from Pullman and Calley, said, my understanding is that the authorization has been sized an amount larger.
They, we always get the authorization for a little larger than what we would need, but it's whatever the balances are on the 2012, 2015 bonds. That's what we'll refinance at the time.
Okay, so this resolution accounts for that?
Correct.
I do have a question through the chair. As far as future general obligation bonds or bonds for usage, for example, for the projects we just heard about, a twofold question. Firstly, does this impact, this is obviously, doesn't seem to me that it'll be an increase of outstanding bond, so it shouldn't affect what we're eligible to get so far as future bonds are concerned.
Correct. If anything, it's going to help us, because our annual payments will be less.
Right. The second portion of the question is, considering the low amount of interest rates now and versus to what they may potentially be, because we really don't know what future interest rates will hold, what type of timeframe do we have if we were to, say, pursue one of these particular projects that we're talking about? Because if we have to bond out 20 or 25 million dollars or more, it may be, it would seem to me that we'd want to do it in a lower interest rate environment than a higher one.
Right, exactly.
So if we were to, say, make plans in the next six to eight months or something as to what we're planning to do, how quickly could we get the bonding necessary to be able to do this? And, yeah, that's basically what I'm asking.
Right. Once I get, we get the authorization from the council, I can usually have it turned around in less than two months.
Okay. I just want to be on the safe side of this, because obviously, if we're talking about a large bond issue, we don't want to be stuck with sudden high-interest rate bonds and then get stuck with a project we can't do. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
But that would have to still go through normal referendum and-
Correct. And we wouldn't bond the entire project all at once. It would be done in phases over a couple of years.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extinctions? Motion passes?
I move to concur with the town manager regarding the appointment of Lisa Dalton as town clerk and set the salary for the position at $83,077.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or concerns? And just for the record, this is the amount that she is currently making?
That's correct. So due to the charter change in Section 606 under town clerk, the first appointment should be deemed in the month of October of this year and would take effect January 4th of 2022. And this, the salary that it stated is what she is currently making.
Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extinctions? Motion passes?
I move to approve an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $12,000 for the installation of traffic monitoring cameras for use by the Watertown Police Department.
Is there a second?
Evening, vice chair and town council members. I just want to thank you guys for, thank the council for affording me the opportunity to familiarize with some technology that I believe is going to be beneficial to the town of Watertown, as well as the Watertown Police Department, and basically combating crime within our neighborhoods. I'm going to start off by introducing myself. My name is Sergeant DeAndre. I'm the administrative sergeant at the Watertown Police Department. This proposal was previously presented to the Police Commission last month. After talking to the Police Commission and getting their consent on it, it was presented to the town manager a few weeks ago. After speaking to him, the recommendation was to present it to the town council for review and hopefully approval. I understand the time, the town council's time is valuable, and I'll try to make this presentation as short but informative as possible. With that being said, Mike, if you could put the presentation on the screen. The objective, going to the next slide, Mike. So it's no secret that the environment that the officers and law enforcement is working in these days has seen significant changes as a result of the Police Accountability Bill. We've had to adapt to these changes and we're doing so accordingly. The one thing that our department strongly believes in, and that's not going to- The one thing that our department strongly believes in that's not gonna change is our view on community policing, with community policing, we believe that reducing crime is gonna be one of our main priorities, and it's gonna reduce the fear of crime, we want to make sure that we enhance public safety, and also that we're enhancing the quality of life of everyone that's within this community. By doing so, it's gonna result, what we need to do is we need to identify and we need to arrest the individuals that are committing these crimes within our communities. We've seen through the Police Accountability Bill, they incorporated some mandatory use of technology, some of that technology is through body cameras or through dash cameras. So what we've noticed in trends from prosecutors is to secure, increase the chances of convictions is to basically get some sort of video footage of the individuals committing the crimes, they'd like to see that obviously incorporated with warrants, and it does, goes a long way with the public, we're potential jurors, to see the actual footage of an individual in either a stolen car or committing some sort of act, you know, a criminal act. When we have that type of evidence, it, one, allows us to identify the individuals through certain other means, and at the same time, it also allows for the arrest and their conviction of these individuals. Really quick, and to touch on crime trends, what we've seen, for violent crimes, it's relative, it's remained relatively low and static throughout the past couple of years. What's drawing our attention is, if you look at this map, this is from January, the beginning of January, you're gonna see that we've had an increase in motor vehicle thefts, we've had an increase of thefts from motor vehicles, and also motor vehicles, motor vehicle parts and stealing stuff out of, property out of motor vehicles. You've also seen an increase, a dramatic increase in shoplifting throughout town. What we're seeing is an emboldened element, a criminal element, that is having a more, a greater disrespect for law enforcement, we're seeing officers trying to, attempting to stop these vehicles, and we're seeing them just disregard our efforts, and we're seeing them take off on us, we're seeing that more and more. So there is, obviously, for quality of life, when we look at that and the crimes, we're seeing property thefts increasing in this town. What we've seen in response to, on the community's part, is what they're doing, and business owners in particular, it's been going on for a while, is that they're utilizing security cameras to protect their interests, to protect their property. Whenever a crime happens at a commercial business, we, if we get that footage, it goes a long way in allowing us to solve the crime, and that evidence that we collect and the video footage that we secure is used to apply for a warrant, and it's used for the conviction of the suspect that we end up finding probable cause to arrest. But what we're seeing now in trend-wise is we're also seeing the community, and we're seeing residents taking it upon themselves to get cameras and install those at their, at their private residence. You're seeing the Ring Doorbell, you're seeing Nest, Google Nest, you're seeing the private citizens taking it upon themselves to secure and protect their own personal property. What I call it is, and the way I refer to, it's almost like a neighborhood watch two point O. You have, you know, the Ring Doorbell, which they have Ring Neighbors, which is an app, that if you're part, if you do have a Ring Doorbell, you could basically link up to everyone that's within the area that has a Ring Doorbell, and crimes and different incidents that look suspicious or concerns could be put onto that platform, and the video could be shared. This video could also be shared with us, which we again use for prosecutions, arrests and convictions. You see that same thing with Nest, these are more compartmentalized, where if you have a Ring Doorbell, you can go on the Ring Neighbors. Nest has one as well, where if you were utilizing a Nest, Google Nest, and you can go onto their platform. If you were to expand it in regards to on a townwide level, we're looking at social media, and we're looking at Watertown Talks, that's a very good area for us to be able to gather information, and for the community members to talk to each other, and basically just about what crime is going on. So we're seeing the community taking the effort and taking, you know, the lead with protecting their property, and grasping the validity and the successful use of security cameras to protect their property. So why today and why now, why are we here? Like I said earlier, this proposal came about as a result of an incident that occurred on Kimberly Lane earlier this year. As a result of that incident, we met with community members during a Police Commission meeting, and we listened to their concerns, we listened to what their expectations were of us as a department, and we took those concerns seriously. Some of the concerns and some of the suggestions that were brought up were more security cameras around town, to be able to identify crimes and to be able to use as an additional tool for us to be able to combat the crime. If, I'm pretty sure every, all members and everyone here is familiar with the incident that happened at Kimberly Lane, I have the actual video, and as you can see, this particular incident was captured on a Google Nest from a neighbor. Again, this is the community taking it and utilizing their, their property or their video and sharing it with us. This is one of the most, very big piece of evidence that we were able to acquire quickly in a timely manner, which was able to kinda give us a good idea in regards to how it transpired. There's details that we couldn't get in regards to the vehicle make and model, which, if we had that in a timely manner, we might have been able to be able to get the individual in the car, we could have done a little bit more. But this evidence right here is what was available to us in the immediate aftermath of that incident. I'm gonna quickly play this, just so we could see. You can see the vehicle right there. So this incident happened, it took eleven seconds from start to finish for this incident to happen. The vehicle, as you can see, we could tell certain things about the vehicle, whether or not it was a truck or a sedan, but we were limited in regards to the exact make and model of that vehicle and some other information. I could tell you there were officers stationed, two officers stationed a mile down the road from this, from when this happened, and they actually heard the gunshots. The way acoustics works, they were not able to pinpoint exactly where the gunshots were coming from, so they started searching one area, which was around a half mile within the shooting, and it took the callers to call up and say, there was just a shooting at Kimberly Lane, to direct them to that location. So with the being, with them being as close as they were, and with the incident only taking ten seconds, obviously, we were able to utilize the Nest camera to be able to gather a lot of information initially to be able to kinda move forward. It would have been nice to be able to get a vehicle description and everything of the vehicle, possibly amount, the amount of suspects, if we could have gotten that information with technology, then it would have been, allowed us to probably possibly resolve the case a little bit quicker, or would have given us a little bit more leads in how to move forward. So again, we're looking at a multifaceted approach on how we're gonna solve crime, we're gonna do it through standard, regular police work, you know, with our detective borough, we're also trying, we wanna incorporate technology into the picture as well. I think that the way that technology is going, and the way that the, it's the current temperature of law enforcement within this, within the state and the nation, I think it's a good thing to start considering the application and incorporating technology into, into police work a little bit more. So this brings me to license plate readers, LPRs. So what license plate readers are, are, is, and we've had them in our, at the Police Department for over a decade now, basically, it's a high-speed computer-controlled camera system that automatically captures the license plate of a vehicle, of any vehicle that would come into view of the camera. What these LPRs are capable of doing is capturing the date, time, location, as well as photographs, and in some instances, photographs of the operator inside that vehicle. What they do is they do not run off of NCIC, which is the National Criminal Information Center, but what they do is they go off of a hot list, which is what we call, easiest way to put it is, all the bad cars. If there's a car that's stolen, if there is a car that has an amber alert, if there's an individual that we're looking for that, you know, is missing, we have the amber alerts, silver alerts, anything that is a car that is a vehicle of interest in a homicide, we could enter, that can get entered into the system, it is entered through the DM, through NCIC, and then from there, if that vehicle was to pass one of these cameras, it would basically hit, is what we call a hit, and it would basically alert the operator, in this, in with, in this case with license plate readers, it would hit, it would contact the dispatchers and let them know that this vehicle, that is a stolen motor vehicle, just entered your town at, let's say there was one stationed at Straits Turnpike, just came into town at Straits Turnpike, and it would provide us with a picture of the stolen car that just drove into town. So with that information, we can now direct officers to the location to try to find that vehicle and see exactly what's this stolen car doing in Watertown at one o'clock in the morning. Whether or not that, you know, the, whatever the intent is of that vehicle, I mean, this is a stolen motor vehicle at one o'clock in the morning, we could assume that they're not out, they're out to, you know, for no good. But what that does is it does track that information for us, and it allows us to basically get more information and capture some information on potential suspects, and it allows us to prevent the crimes before they happen, and therefore, again, increasing the quality of life and increasing the safety of the residents in this town. So this right here, if you look at the screen, it does show basically what the screen would look like, and what it does is, the vehicles pass by, it does isolate the license, the license plate, and from there, it would run that, it would take that plate, that number that it picked up, and run it through the hot list that we have. Later on, I'm gonna get into the expansion capabilities of this, which I think would definitely be another option that we could consider, but what this does is it utilizes, that's the screen and what it looks like, it would gather that information, it would basically be able to apply it to the list. So this is what the LPR looks, this is what they use, I mean, they still do look like this, so if you ever see any of our, you know, in our fleet, if you do see in our traffic car in particular, and you see a box on, on the back trunk of that vehicle, that is what an LPR looks like, that's the older-style LPRs. Again, with technology, what we're seeing is, the cameras, any normal camera is being, is now able to be turned into a license plate reader. So we don't need, and this is a relatively expensive unit, this was seventeen thousand dollars when we initially purchased it. So this is a relatively expensive, it's a dedicated license plate reader that has a camera embedded in it. What we're looking at is a security camera that has the technology of LPR applied to it, so it's a little more versatile for our needs. So again, this one was approximately seventeen thousand dollars. These are good, because we've used these, we've had some protests and some demonstrations last year, what we're able to utilize these for is we posted it at the major artery of the town, where we were having our protest, or where the protests or the, you know, demonstrations were, and it was able to document every passing vehicle, so in the event that there was an issue, or in the event something had happened, we would have this information to go back to and say, well, this vehicle passed by this incident, you know, three times. So we would have that information, you know, looking back. But they are good because it's mobile, but this is used for traffic enforcement, and that's not what the purpose of the ones that we're looking at now are. The thing with these ones also is it's controlled by the computer inside the car, so if you have a license plate reader, the operator, the officer that's in that vehicle is looking at a computer screen, and that's dictating and telling him or her exactly, you know, this car is good, you know, it's green means good, obviously, the red is gonna, it's gonna give us an alert. So it requires that the officer basically be right next to the system in order for it to really work. What we're doing and what we're looking for, based on our manpower needs, is we're looking for a force multiplier. When I say force multiplier, I'm saying we have three officers, four officers on the road at any given time. If we were to incorporate, which what I'm proposing, we would be able to add basically, you know, ten cameras, we would be able to add ten officers or ten areas where we can gather information. Imagine an LPR as a device that basically, as an officer, that basically stands at one location the entire day, twenty-four seven, and just watches traffic, that's basically what we're looking at. So we're looking for a force multiplier when we're, when, as I present this. So there's three different types of license plate readers that I looked at, and most of them, you know, I considered price when I looked at this quote, when I, when I looked at all of them, I looked at the quality of what we're gonna be able to get and just the range. A lot of the ones, the first two that I saw was Motorola, which is this one right here, it's a solar-powered unit, but this price tag on this is around seventeen thousand, just for one. And now, they only offer it in a situation where you can only purchase it, so you cannot lease these, you cannot lease this technology, you cannot lease this equipment, so when we own it, again, what, technology, the way it's going, within three to five years, this will be almost obsolete, and again, what we're seeing is, this is a dedicated license plate reader, it's not necessarily a camera. So it does have the Motorola name to it, which is pretty much what we're kinda, kinda be paying for. It is quick deploy, so it is a solar power, so you could take it down and put it from any unit, any place that you want, depending on whatever, you know, if we see trends going from one road, we can move it there, or vice versa, so it is relatively deployable because it's solar-powered. But again, you're gonna be purchasing it. Flock Safety was the second one that I came across, this one again is also solar-powered, but they introduced to me a leasing option, which I thought was actually pretty, pretty good. They, what they do is, they install it, they maintain it, they incorporate all the LTE, this runs off of cellular, so all of the, you know, cellphone charges, everything is incorporated in that fee, and it's a yearly fee of twenty-five hundred dollars. So after hearing that they could lease it, the initial considerations were, maybe we can get three of them, seventy-five hundred dollars, we'll have it on the major arteries of our town, and this way, if something happens, there's a better chance that we'll be able to gather some information, you know, in the event something had happened. The problem with this particular camera is you're looking at, it's gonna cover one, maybe two lanes, if you're lucky. So if we had one on, let's say, Straits Turnpike, you would be able to get either northbound or southbound traffic, you won't be able to get both. So again, it kinda, my thought, kind of thought process expanded a little bit and said, well, maybe there's something a little bit better that we can kinda look at. Flock Safety is also new to the market, so they're really not established in Connecticut. So with that being said, I kind of, I went and I looked at another company, which was, if you look at the, one second. Where is this?
My name is Nick Nicoletti.
My name is Nick Nicoletti.
I'm the president of Westfield HOA in Katy, Texas.
Been here for thirty-one years now.
President.
Our neighborhood, Westfield.
Our neighborhood, Westfield.
Home Association.
Has a total of eleven entrances.
We have twenty-two flock cameras covering those entrances.
What started this whole thing?
What started this whole thing?
Is we had an incident over here with some gang shooting.
And the gang shooting.
And the gang shooting.
Two gangs lived across the street.
Two gangs lived across the street.
And they were literally shooting across one of our major thoroughfares.
Get out of this, Mike, thank you. Sorry about that, that was an embedded file I had in there for a previous presentation. If you could open that open up one more time for me, Mike, and just pick up where we left So like I was saying with Flock Safety, they're limited in regards to the amount of lanes that you can get, so you're, you're gonna be able to, you're talking, you can get one lane of travel, which was good, but we wanted a little bit better, and wanted to get a little bit more, a little bit more, for what we're paying, we wanted to kinda get as much type of information as we could. Again, they are not established in Connecticut, so if we were to look at other vendors or look at other locations where they are, I really couldn't get a good grasp in regards to exactly how efficient their system is. Just give me one second to catch back up to where you, well, let's go play this again. So from Flock, I ended up going to another company called Raykor, and Raykor is the company that I'm actually was the most impressed with. Raykor is offering, basically, it's gonna be ten cameras that they lease to us, it's gonna be ten cameras, and the price tag for them is gonna be twelve thousand dollars. That's gonna include everything that I mentioned before, which is all of your cellular fees, all of your maintenance fees, and they even install the system as well. The thing I like about Raykor is they are capable of tracking more than one lane, up to from, between four and six lanes of travel. So if you had one of these devices set up on, let's say, on, as we use Straits Turnpike again, they could capture four lanes of travel, east, northbound and southbound at the same time. These devices, again, work off cellular, and they are relatively expansive. They use Axis cameras, which are very high-end cameras that are of high quality as well, and again, the pricing does, it does include installation as well. This also has a very big, it has a footprint in Connecticut as well, Hartford is, already has these, Bridgeport, Stratford, and Greenwich actually have these on there as well. I have spoken to the Hartford Police Department, and they, they have solved homicides with these things. They do think that, they actually just purchased an additional ten, so they do have, I believe at this point, they have around thirty to forty of them in their, you know, pretty much as a tool for them to be able to utilize to, to solve crimes within their town. So what we're looking to do is, like, with us being a smaller town, we do rely on the, you know, the surrounding towns to help us out and to kinda collaborate and solve crimes and with a group effort. I know that this company has, is currently in talks with Waterbury Police Department, Middlebury Police Department, Nogatuck Police Department, and Connecticut State Police as well. So with them already being deployed here, and with the results and everything that I've heard from them, they, you know, they seem like they have everything that we would need to be able to have a successful program with this, with these license plate readers. Initially, as a con, initially, I thought that ten cameras was too much, but when you think about it, if you were able to put it at major choke points, you know, either, you know, abutting certain areas that we know where there's problems, I think ten cameras is sufficient, and it is a lease that we would have, and it'd be a one... is sufficient, and it is a lease that we would have, and it'd be a one-year lease. So we could try it out, see how it is for a year. If the other, the other surrounding neighborhoods were to opt into this as well, which I'm optimistic that they would be opting into this particular, this particular program, all, if we had an incident that happened in our town, the data would be shared between Waterbury and also us. So if we were to take the Kimberly Lane shooting, if we have, if that vehicle came into our town and ended up driving through one of our choke points and ended up running, driving through the camera, we would have had that information. If it was stolen, we would have been alerted that a stolen vehicle just entered our town, we would have been looking for it. If it wasn't stolen, and the vehicle ended up leaving, doing what it had, you know, or ended up being involved in the shooting and then fled the area, we would have been able to look at the, look at the cameras to see what vehicles at that time drove past it. From there, once we were able to get a plate, you could basically piecemeal back where that vehicle was. So if that vehicle started in Hartford at three o'clock in the afternoon, we would say, this is the plate that we're looking for, and they can give us, basically, a background, we could backtrack to find out where it was coming from, we could also see where it went after. So if it started off in Waterbury and then drove through Hartford and then drove through Waterbury, we would be able to tell the map and place where it went, as long as if it passed one of these cameras. So, and that helps develop a bigger picture in regards to where they were going, what they were doing. And again, it captures a lot of information. In some cases, we can even catch the operator and the vehicle. What we're seeing is with stolen cars, they would steal the vehicle, and then we'll find it abandoned, excuse me, abandoned a day or two later with no one in it. So what we're doing is using other investigative tools to catch, to catch them through DNA or other types of means. If we could have, you know, for, if you're a juror, if you're someone that's seen this, and we want to get them, we want to have the successful arrest and conviction, having them sitting in that car, in that stolen vehicle, is evidence that would definitely be something that would help and secure that conviction. So, really quick, I have some comparisons here, again, in regards to the differences with each one. What I'd like to direct you to is the Raykor again, but it's going to be that last sentence there, that last thing that I actually, again, is something that I think that the Town Council would like, and I think that actually the Board of Ed would actually be considering as well. These, this technology is expandable to any IP camera. So if we were to, the Town Council was to approve this, and we were able to get the ten cameras, we could, if the town, if the town hall has an IP camera set up at the main entrance here, we could have that converted and sent, set up as an IP camera. There would be an additional, it would be fifty dollars per month through Raykor, and that technology would be automatically opted into our department. So from there, if we had an incident where there was an individual that we had concerns about, or something had happened, that, if that information, based on investigation, was entered into the, into our hot list, into that list, if that vehicle was to enter this property, we would be alerted within thirty seconds through dispatch. Apply this to the Board of Education. If you have this type of camera, an IP camera set up at the entrance of, let's say, John Trumble. If they were to have the Raykor system as well, and if there was an individual that they did not want there, or there was, you know, somebody that had a warrant for something, you know, or had ill intent, if we had that information entered into the computer system, into the hot list, as soon as that vehicle entered that property, we would be alerted that this stolen, this vehicle or this individual that we were wanted for questioning just walked, just pulled into the John Trumble school. So from there, we could deploy our assets, and we could further investigate from there. That's on the, that's on the public aspect of it. Taking it a little bit, a step further in where this technology is, if you wanted to bring this to the private sector, where if you're a condo complex, and let's say, we'll use Reflections. If you have a camera set up at the main entrance of Reflections, and if you wanted to opt in, this is completely up to the HO, to the, you know, the management company, if they wanted that technology to be applied to that camera, they would sign up for it, they would, we would get opted in at their request. And if from there, if a stolen motor vehicle drives into their property, then that, then we would get alerted as well that a stolen motor vehicle just drove into Reflections. And again, within thirty seconds, we're able to direct our patrols to that location and further investigate and see exactly what happens. If we don't find anything, they'll see us in the area looking for it, and sometimes just having the presence there, knowing where to look when they're there, it does, would help solve the crime, or help, you know, eliminate the potential for a crime to even occur. So, so again, so to sum it up, with Raykor and Flock, which were the two that I was leaning towards, Raykor is the company that I think would serve our needs for the price and for what it's offering. We're looking for a force multiplier, we're looking for some, an extra tool to be able to help our department, to be able to make this community as safe as we could, to make sure that the quality of life for everyone in this community is as good as it could be. And that, we're taking, you know, we are listening to what concerns the public has. Like I said, this is a direct result of listening to the community, and I think this is one of, this is one of the best answers we have as of now. Really quick in regards to installations, considerations, I know that one of the concerns was brought up in regards to making it as versatile as you could. These would be hardwired. However, all we would need at this point, and it's the entire, you know, numerous departments around the state have had, they have agreements with Eversource. It would get reviewed by the town manager, as well as the town attorney, to make sure that the memo of understanding is in place. Once that is in there, we could put these on any telephone pole that we need to, and we can move them around based on the needs. If we see crime trends in one particular area, we could move them. But before, when they are put up, they're going to be put up in an area that we're going to, we believe is going to get the most usage for them, and be able to help solve as many crimes as we could. So in regards to where we are with this, again, there's other towns and other agencies that are right behind us. I'm thinking within the next month, you'll see other agencies jumping on board with this technology. The Watertown Police Department, we're taking the lead on this by presenting it to you guys, and hopefully getting the approval to be able to kind of move forward with it. But this technology is technology that you're going to see in law enforcement agencies around the state, and it's something that is just a better tool that I think is going to benefit not just our department, obviously the community as well. And that's, so again, in conclusion, what we're looking at is to reduce the crimes, reduce the serious felonies, motor vehicle thefts. The one thing I didn't mention, which I know has been coming up as well, is we've had incidents with quads and with dirt bikes driving up and down the road, sixty, a hundred cars. While this technology is a video camera with the, with the LPR technology applied to it, if it does not catch a license plate, it works off of motion. So if you have sixty quads coming down the road, and there's no license plate, it will not pick up a license plate. But if we know when that they came down that road, if they came down that road at one-thirty, then we could check one-thirty, the footage at one-thirty, and we could see the list, you know, the row of quads, the row of dirt bikes coming down the road, and that'll increase the opportunity for us to be able to identify who they are. If the public knows that, and these would be on public areas only, the public, and if, you know, some of the criminals know that they're going to come into Watertown, they know that they're going to be caught on camera, and they're going to know that, you know, we're going to do everything we need to do to be able to enforce the law and be able to catch them and prosecute them accordingly. And that is the presentation. So if you have any questions, I'm sure some people might have some. I'll try to answer them as best as I could. If I cannot, I will get the answer for you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. It was very informative. Do you have any questions?
Very impressed by the presentation, Sergeant DeAndrea.
Thank you.
Tackle a phrase repeatedly heard at previous council meetings, you can't put a price on public safety. You research on this, it's a reasonable price for initially and continued use of it. There are trends of late, as we know. The mobility of criminals going from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, especially in the nighttime hours. Somebody may go to Middlebury, they may go to Nogatuck. Property crimes, as you mentioned, is an increase, that's a trend in itself.
Yes, it is.
But property crimes have involved into serious violent crimes. Carjackings were seen in the media every day. Purse snatching with violence in Nogatuck, which resulted in a carjacking. The officer himself, who was injured in Farmington, near death. I believe that regarding that, there was a picture of the vehicle used, so they kind of initiated their investigation. This is not only important, in my opinion, to prevent criminality, people coming into town, but to result and following up and determining who these people may be. I think it's very good. I endorse it fully, and I think it has my support.
So if I could really quickly just add to, to that, the one thing that we have noticed with, again, we, I discussed a lot about property crimes that we're dealing with, you know, during the overnight hours. What we're finding, and what some of the officers are finding, and not necessarily in our department, but, you know, through other channels, is that just because they're breaking into cars doesn't mean that they're, they're not really a threat. We've had incidents where, you know, firearms are stolen, we've had incidents where criminals and juveniles are actually caught with firearms as well. So when they do this, they're not going into a car and just taking the property, they're doing this as, while they're armed as well. So in the event a homeowner was to approach this individual, whoever it is that would be committing the crime, you're dealing with, you know, juveniles, and you're dealing with juveniles that could be armed as well. That is not, unfortunately, while at one point, you know, that was very rare, you're seeing that more and more often now, where we're getting notices saying, you know, this, this individual, you know, is, you know, are known to carry firearms as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I would be remiss without asking, but you've mentioned the other towns and cities getting involved in this. Does Watertown have the opportunity to piggyback with them and save money by ordering more cameras? Or getting in with a group of people to order the cameras at the same time?
We could. I did speak to Raykor regarding that, because there is another town that surrounds us that really would not need ten cameras. They would use maybe around three, four, maybe five. Again, with that, when that comes into play, Raykor had no issue with us being able to work out something where we could, you know, we could get fifteen, and then we could take a certain amount, and they could take the others. That'll be something that will be discussed between, obviously, before anything is finalized, the town manager and the chief would work towards getting the understanding squared.
Did you comment on that, council member? We are, we're running a youth police academy right now, and every time we've done an adult police academy as well, one of the questions I always ask the members of those academies on the very first day, is how many officers do you think we have out on patrol at any given moment in town of Watertown? And the answer is almost always the same. Almost every single time, they say twenty. And when they hear that the real answer is four or five, they are absolutely astonished. This provides an opportunity for just twelve thousand dollars a year, what, kind of ten extra officers out on the road, watching traffic, watching every single car that drives by, telling the four or five officers that are on duty what's coming into town, what's leaving town. You know, that has an opportunity to identify amber and silver alerts if that vehicle's associated with a person that's listed out as an amber or silver alert, who will identify the stolen vehicles, and the vehicle associated with missing persons, overdue vehicles, anything that entered into that national crime picture, it'd be a vehicle of interest. Talk about a force multiplier for twelve thousand dollars with one officer who lost account with that part of a hundred thousand dollars.
Chief, I believe, I believe technology is a key today to police and fire. So I'm just looking, I'm just looking at, is it going to be cheaper for the community? Because you're asking this above and beyond what you've budgeted for. So I think that the question really needs to come out, is, is there another way that we could save money for the townspeople?
Yeah, we could go in with, say, Middlebury, do half and half, and only get six. But I'm worried about another issue that did come up here tonight, where we only have six, it'll be easy to drive around.
Yeah.
We can get ten, we can really hit all the major choke points in this community, and it would be really hard and take a lot of planning on someone's part to try to avoid these cameras. They're going to get caught on one of them.
And by no means was I saying to go less than, than your ten cameras. I was just saying, if you have somebody like the city of Waterbury, who's going to be buying forty cameras or a hundred cameras, you know, it could be driving the price of us down, and you might be doing it at the same time, right? You may be talking to this company, and so could, so could the city of Waterbury at the same time. If you collaborate, we get the savings.
So their, their pricing model, it's a hundred and twenty dollars per camera per month, and they're pretty hard on that. And you have to do ten at a minimum to start an account. That's where we got the twelve thousand from.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant. That was excellent presentation. I have a number of questions, all very different.
Sure.
The first one, just wondering if you could clarify for me on the crime trends data on the vertical axis, it goes from zero to fourteen. What is that measure of unit?
That's one, like, each incident, that's an incident, each.
Okay.
Per, that's, yeah, that represents one incident.
Okay, so by September of this year, there were about fourteen thefts from motor vehicles?
Mm-hmm. That were reported.
Just for the month of September?
Just for that month.
Per month?
That, that were reported. If I could emphasize that. There's a lot of thefts from motor vehicles that go unreported. So if we're getting incidents that are not being told to us, then this data is obviously, it's going to be higher because it's missing information. So we, there's a lot of people that, once they get into their cars, some of them are a mess, they don't even realize that the car was going through.
Yeah.
There's some that, once they see it, they say, ah, there's nothing was taken, they don't report it to us. So that's, that's where that number came from.
Okay. But that's, yeah, so that's like one every other day, pretty much.
Around there, yeah.
Okay. So will these be recorded, since you said that you might be using some of the images for evidence later? Will they be stored in the cloud by the company, or how does that work?
So the data retention works, they, we, I, when I spoke to them today, it could be set up depending on what our needs are. So if we wanted to have the data retention for thirty days, we could have it for thirty days, at which point from there, it gets exposed, it gets removed. If there was something of evidentiary value that we wanted, we could preserve it, to hold it and maintain it for, to, for, obviously, for the prosecution or for, to further the case. So the information would be stored, you know, thirty, sixty days, whichever we had, obviously, before this would even become implemented, there would be a policy put in place on exactly its usage, so.
Okay. So this next question is sort of along those same lines, because you mentioned something about a homicide being solved with the camera. So it obviously takes videos or still photographs, or however, of more than just license plates, so.
Yes. Well, it works on motion. So it's basically, just imagine a security camera that picks up somebody moving, and basically, it would basically pick up that motion. So...
Okay, so it's not working if there's no, no motion?
Yeah, it would be recorded. If there's nothing passing by, it's not going to be on.
Okay, okay. Would it also, could it also be used for traffic violations, running red lights, right on red?
Not, not, no. I mean, that's not our intent.
That's a different form of technology?
We wouldn't, we can't use that as that, for that. You know, we don't use cameras as a law enforcement tool. We use them for, the license plate readers are used with the officer that's there. These are not going to be used to monitor anybody's, these are used primarily to monitor flow of traffic. They're not going to be used to enforce motor vehicle laws or anything like that.
And they could not be.
Yeah, by law, they're not.
There's no radar embedded in them, and, and, you know, it's still not legal in Connecticut to do enforcement via camera.
Oh, it's not legal in the state of Connecticut to do that?
No.
Oh, I know they do it in New York. Okay.
Yeah, they do it in many other states.
Yeah, not in Connecticut.
Oh, I didn't know that. Okay. If I may, my last question's kind of just a bigger, more philosophical question about civil liberties violations, and if you can obviously see a person in a vehicle, what do you do about, like, you know, mismatch, or identifying that person, and, you know, bringing in the wrong person, or violating somebody's privacy if it's, you know?
So with the cameras, like, they aren't concentrating on the individual driver. There's cases where the driver might get picked up when it does do the license plate read. The information, like I said, is stored, obviously, in the cloud. It is auto, anybody who was to look at any of the information on that, the policy would obviously be direct, would be created in regards to its use and when you could search it. It is all audible, auditable, excuse me. So you could go back, and we could see exactly who checked what, to see what they were looking, to see exactly what they, what they wanted to see. So there are safety measures in there, obviously, in place to ensure that whoever is looking at it is for investigative purposes. And they need to give a reason, if they were to go into the system, they need to give a reason why they're doing it. Whether or not it's a case number, or whatever the type of investigation is, they need to justify why they're looking into the system.
Great, excellent. Thank you so much.
No problem.
And just along those same lines, would footage from these cameras be open to the public? From the sounds of it, the answer is no.
Yes. So it would be, it is FOI-able. However, again, it's a, it's going to be determined by how we have everything set up. We could have it thirty days is the minimum. So we could have this information for thirty days. After that, it would be gone, and we do not have an obligation to maintain or retrieve it past that thirty days. But that would be dictated by the policy the chief sets up.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just quickly, where's this, you said it's in the cloud. Do we know where the servers are, or?
It's Amazon Web Service is where this information, from the way I was told, that's where the information goes. So from the cloud is when we would be able to retrieve it from there.
Okay. And is this, is this a company that's approved by federal government, or?
They are, I don't, I'm not going to tell you something I'm not a hundred percent sure of. I could tell you, they do have a footprint in Connecticut. They are very big in Massachusetts. They are also very big in Red, in New York, Rochester area as well. So they pretty much have us covered, you know, from, you know, north and pretty much to the, to the west. They, and they're also established, obviously, down the entire east coast as well. I believe they're stationed out of Maryland is where they are. But regarding the background and exactly what, where, you know, the background on that company, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. But they are, they do have a reputation that I was comfortable presenting to you.
They, they have, this company has been appearing at all the major law enforcement trade shows as well, so they're gaining, gaining their footprint pretty quick nationally.
So I imagine they're a United States company?
Yes.
I would imagine.
Yes.
I would imagine.
Cameras won't be waiting on any ships.
Through the chair. I, I fully support the program, I sat through the presentation, I think the presentation was excellent. One of the things that I think Sergeant DeAndrea, for me, and I may have missed this, is the pinpoint to patrol. One thing I would ask and I would ask the council to consider that we get a report back so that we could evaluate this going from year to year, because it is an annual subscription and not that, we wouldn't expend those funds every year even if we didn't get a homicide solved or something like that, because it does seem to be a program, but I think we need that information moving forward to evaluate it.
Thank you.
Chris Daniel.
Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
I move to approve an appropriation authorizing approval of the suspense list for pass due taxes.
Second. Are there any questions or concerns? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
I move to approve a resolution authorizing tax refunds.
Through second.